Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll. Tanya Bowers, President Joseph Campos.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Ty Jennings.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myron.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jerry Hinler.
Did you hear that?
Jay Hinler? No.
There's a lot of striking going on.
Yeah, yeah. Jay Hinler.
Present.
Madam Chair, there are nine members present and we do have a call. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. Can someone silence themselves, please?
Attendees, please make sure you're muted unless speaking. Thank you.
The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded, so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table, so you may follow along with this meeting. At this time, I would like to ask that you silence your cellphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city address for our records. Before we start, before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to the Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any item on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We, as a Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the City Council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the September 16th, 2020 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the Commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Bowers, this is Commissioner Cochran. I move that we approve the Thursday, September 17th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes as submitted, as written.
I second it.
I second it by Commissioner Myron.
Okay, um, it's been moved by Commissioner Cochran and seconded by Commissioner Myron. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item is unfinished business. We have a number of items that have previously come before the Planning Commission, and they are here before us on the agenda tonight for us to obtain any further clarification from city staff to discuss the items amongst ourselves and to come to a conclusion for our recommendation to City Council. The first item is a code amendment, which is a request for comprehensive plan update, MF #2020002. We will start our discussion with any further clarifying comments from staff.
Madam Chair, we have just an update for the commission. As you know, last month, the commission recommended approval of the comprehensive plan and the accompanying EIS and Alternative 3 of the urban growth boundary. That recommendation was acted upon by council and approved on the October 5th meeting, and they, the council also authorized to middle of that to Franklin County. And just as a reminder for the commission, Franklin County actually will make the final decision on the city's urban growth boundary and will certify their acceptance of our comprehensive plan. So on it goes to the county, and we're working with county staff right now to arrange a introductory meeting that will include our legal counsel, and with their legal counsel, we hope to make sure that we're all on the same page for the rules that will apply, knowing that we are likely to be in receipt of some kind of an appeal, based, most likely, on the expansion of the urban growth area.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. White, for that update. It looks like there is no motion or action necessary from us. Check. Alright, now we are able to move on to our public hearing. The first item is a code amendment. This is a request for street connectivity and master file CA 2019-013. And we will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Staffs prepared a staff report, a presentation along with an updated proposed amendment to the Pasco municipal code that we believe aligns city regulations with established council goals, policies, and plans. At prior meetings, staff has emphasized that many of our city goals, policies, plans are not met with the current code, are particular components of the current code. And on the next slide, I'd like to highlight two of very recent adoptions that are important to the code before you tonight, and that would be the 2018-2038 Comprehensive Plan that was adopted on October 5th by the City Council, and also the 2020-2021 City Council Goals, which were adopted in September. Those are done every two years after council conducts a series of public forums, receives feedback, and then they develop a series of council goals that staff is tasked with hopefully meeting the intent of those goals there. So the next several slides are just a high-level overview of what some of these council goals and comprehensive plan policies are. So with regards to the council goals, they have a focus on quality of life, financial sustainability, community safety, community transportation network, economic vitality, community identity. On the next slide, you'll see how that's broken down into a series of objectives. Under quality of life, the council has identified that improving the efficiency and effectiveness of public resources, in the delivery of municipal services, programs of long-term maintenance, and viability of public facilities is a factor in quality of life. Same with updating design standards for the development of new neighborhoods that promote greater neighborhood connectivity cohesion through design elements, including walkability. Under community safety, council has identified that achieving and maintaining target fire response times in support of council goals meets community safety. And again, on the next slide, further information on community transportation network, which council has identified that they believe it's important to promote a highly functional multimodal transportation system through continued collaboration with multiple agencies, utilization, and development of policies, regulations, programs that provide for a greater connectivity, strategic investment, mobility, multimodal systems, accessibility, and efficiency and safety of our own network, and community identity, which is an opportunity for members of Pasco to provide input to council and to staff on how the city functions. The 2018-2030 Comprehensive Plan that the Planning Commission recommended for approval in September also has significant updates across its entire document, but specifically, staff's intent with the comprehensive plan as a whole was to be fully compliant with the Washington State Growth Management Act, which has a series of planning goals, including specifics on land use that supports multimodal transportation planning efforts, again, and collaboration with multiple state agencies, local, regional governments. Some specifics include the encouraged reduction in dependency of vehicle travel, encourage the orderly development of land by emphasizing connectivity and efficiency of the transportation network. Under economic development, we have a policy that infrastructure, including transportation and utility planning, is vital to economic development and attracting businesses here in Pasco. We also have additional transportation policies about the development of interconnected network of streets, trails, and other public ways, collaboration, coordination with other government units in preparing development regulations. I believe that through the proposal that staff has prepared for the Planning Commission tonight, we've addressed many of what council and the comprehensive plan has identified as important for the future of the city of Pasco. I believe it's evident by the level of support we've received from public agencies, including the Visit Tri-Cities, the local tourism bureau for our region, Ben Franklin Transit, the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, our own fire department, and the Washington State Department of Transportation. I think in addition to the agencies pictured here, guidance and research from a variety of organizations, forums, research institutions has provided, has been provided to the Planning Commission in the staff reports and presentations at prior meetings, that have all identified transportation accessibility as a benefit for our community across, or communities across the country. These include the Urban Land Institute, the National Association of Realtors, and the National Association of Home Builders. The Washington State Association of Realtors published a community development toolkit that specifically mentions the benefits of transportation benefits and choices when options are provided for communities that they are located in. Past presentations have also included guidance from a variety of federal agencies, including the Federal Highway and Transit Administration, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and even a 2016 publication by the White House on housing affordability that again specifies accessible transportation as a need for communities across our country. So with that being said, we'd like to summarize over the next few slides what we've shared with the Planning Commission over the last almost year. So obviously, this is a slide that we've shared maybe since December 2019 when we began this effort, and that is how Pasco ranks in terms of our block length requirement. That's the graph on the left. Pasco shaded in purple, obviously one of the higher jurisdictions, and the maximum, and the average block perimeter for all of the, I believe there's 17 jurisdictions on both, on both graphs. And again, Pasco in purple, this is the average block perimeter. Pasco again is one of the highest. We've shared this at prior meetings, and I think it's important because it kind of feeds into the following metrics that follow on the next several slides. So we try to summarize, there's been a lot of information shared with the Planning Commission, and we wanted to summarize that for us, especially compare that with the 20 largest, most populous cities across the state of Washington. I realize that, you know, there may be some concern about comparing us with some of the larger jurisdictions across the state, but keep in mind that Pasco, at the time, well compared in this chart is 75,000, but in 2020, we have 77,000 residents in Pasco. Staff right now is working with our Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's the Council of Governments, to develop a future land use and transportation forecast for the year 2045. Estimates from the Washington State Office of Financial Management indicate that Pasco will be home to 145,000 residents by the year 2045. Our region will be home to 450,000 people by the year 2045. So while 20 years ago, Pasco or the Tri-Cities may have been considered small, that simply is not the case today. And we believe that the proposal in front of the Planning Commission today addresses current needs with an eye towards the future. So with the slide in front of you, Pasco, you can see Pasco's specific information in green and how we rank across the top 20 cities in terms of population, which today, or as of this chart, we're 16th out of 20th. So housing and transportation is, are the two highest household costs for any household across the country. Pasco is right in the middle, 10 out of 20. Transportation cost for Pasco out of their percent of the total income, we have the third highest, across the 20th, 20 most populous cities in the state of Washington. So the transportation cost per household in Pasco out of the 20 most populous cities in the state of Washington were the third highest. On the next slide, we have more information about vehicle most traveled per Pasco. Pasco ranks second highest out of 20. The annual VMT cost, so the cost of every vehicle mile traveled in every household in Pasco, we rank again the second highest out of 20. And on the environment, the annual greenhouse gas emissions, which transportation is the largest contributor of, Pasco households again are the second highest out of the 20 largest cities in the state of Washington. We have some additional information on transit. Households within a half mile of a transit stop, Pasco's towards the bottom half, 14th out of 20th. Transit ridership as a percent of work trips, Pasco is number 16 out of the 20. And these figures here, obviously some that we can all understand. The mean travel time to work, Pasco with the 21.8 minutes, that puts us at 15th out of 20th, which isn't too bad, that's a good thing. However, our distance to work, and I'll be honest, some of these are quite surprising. The Pasco has the most jobs within 10 miles. These are actual trips, so there's not just a number of locations of a store next to a household, this is the actual trip length. Pasco has 68% of the worker commuter trips in Pasco are within 10 miles, that puts us as number one, that's a really good thing. The distance for longer trips, 10 to 24 miles, Pasco is towards the bottom. Again, probably a good thing, number 19 out of 20. So when we talk about the benefits of what we believe is, well, the code amendment before you tonight, I think it's important to mention, or understand that there is a quality of life impact that will be had with the proposal before you tonight. So the next several slides focus on the policy recommendations, and we've talked about these over the last two meetings, but just a summary again. The updated proposal will have clarification for connectivity to abutting lands, a consideration for a future street plan, and what these both mean is that when a development is proposed in the city of Pasco, that there must be considerations for how it's going to be accessed in and outside of it. This isn't an isolated development. It will have an impact on the adjacent patterns or decent lands next to it. And so we believe that these two provisions will ensure that communities actually can connect to one another. We have additional clarifications for cul-de-sac requirements. Again, we have some in our current code, this just reaffirms them. Also, the additional clarity for the minimum intersection spacing. And on the next slide, again, considerations for pedestrian and bicycle accessways. The draft ordinance within your staff report packet today has the criteria for when and when those, when and when not those would be required, and we made some changes, slight modifications to how those would be applied as well. So the next slide has information on what we believe is a, is a, an important change for the city of Pasco in terms of how we're able to achieve and meet the goals that council has asked staff to meet, along with input from the community. So the maximum block length has not changed, either in residential, commercial, or the Riverview West Pasco area, again, which is south of 182, west of 395, bordered by the Columbia River. We have increased the maximum block perimeter to try to account for the right of way that would be necessary to meet that. So we've added 120 and 160 to both the residential and light to medium commercial, and the maximum cul-de-sac length has remained the same at 600 feet. That table on the bottom left is now included due to the comments we received from the community and also from the Planning Commission in September. So this is based off of the Ashto guidance. So on the left, you see the speed limit. On the right, you see the minimum intersection distance that would be required per the corresponding speed limit on any given accessway in the city of Pasco. Again, same exceptions, except with one addition. The cul-de-sac, there was some concern, stress to staff about what that may do, what that means, and so in an effort to keep connectivity, but try not to be overburdening some, but have some, some sense here, was we would require pathways whenever a cul-de-sac was in 1,320 feet, that's a typo, 1,320 feet of any current or planned public facility or amenity. This would be a school, this could be a park, this could be a bus stop, it could be a medical facility, any place that, a public or civic use, that the public has a right to access, within that 1,320 feet, an accessway would be required. So excuse my mediocre clip art here. So this is a maximum block, 660 feet under the proposal, the block perimeter, 1,880 feet. On the left side, when you can justify exceeding both the block length and block perimeter, you would be required to make provisions for a pathway, so that at least there would be some considerations for those traveling not by motor vehicle. So obviously, not drawn to scale, however, it's trying to demonstrate what this means on paper. Obviously, this will look a lot different when then submitted in an appropriate application. So we get a lot of questions, or have been getting a lot of questions about where does 660 come from? Where did the 1,320 feet maximum come from? And I think I mentioned this at the September meeting, but it actually comes from the US Department of Interior's Bureau of Land Management. It's one of the fundamental components of township development, and you can see on the left slide, the quarter sections, we have maps in the planning department with entire city drawn out in quarter section. So that, that's where it originated from. I know we've had comments about our proposal, and that perhaps it's something that is only seen in larger cities, or places that maybe are extremely dense or have high employment areas, but that's not the case. An efficient transportation system, all it requires is people that need to get around. That is why cities like Walla Walla, Ellensburg have codes just like this. The next slide is, is really to address any questions. However, I did want to add that, I know there's some comments about some of the survey information that we've shared over the past, well, almost year, from the variety of resources, whether it was the Sumo's Pasco effort, whether it was what led into the council goals, the comprehensive plan process, the My Tri 2030, the Council of Government surveys for their long-range plan, et cetera. And again, reiterate that in Resolution 3985 that the council adopted for their goals, it specifically mentions the importance of ongoing community input and surveying. And so I think staff understands that we never get the amount of input that we hope for. I think if we could get 100%, we'd gladly accept it. But because we don't get 100%, 100% doesn't mean we should necessarily undermine it. I think staff, we are aware of the many obstacles in the way of those seeking to provide their comments, concerns, questions about the operations of how their city operates, how Pasco functions. And I do think that perhaps one way to increase community buy-in is to actually demonstrate that we're listening to what the community is telling us. Exhibit G of the staff report is basically a direct export of all of the verbal comments, well over a couple hundred, that we received this spring and summer on the first of two surveys for the transportation system master plan. And if you skim through it, you'll notice some reoccurring themes: safety, connectivity, congestion, sidewalks, safety, congestion, over and over and over again. The community has done what we've asked them and provided input, and we believe that the proposal in front of you today addresses what they've asked us to, and also meets what council has asked us in very recent times with the council goals and obviously the comprehensive plan. This would be the implementation of the comprehensive plan. So that's the staff presentation I have, and myself, along with Dan Ford, senior engineer, obviously Rick White, Community Economic Development Director, are here to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez, for that presentation, and to your colleagues who are also in the room. I know a lot of work has gone into this, in addition to a lot of input from the community. I want to go to my fellow commissioners. Do you have any questions or comments for city staff at this time? Nope.
This is Commissioner Cochran, sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Cochran.
First of all, I'd like to say, you know, Jacob and staff, you guys have done an amazing amount of work with lots of churns and lockets of back and forth, and the way you've done to come up with a reasonable compromise and listen to the community and the builders, the development community is amazing, and it really, to me, represents a great, well-balanced compromise between all the different things that you and pressures and masters that you have to serve with this. I just had one more question about, one of the things I noted in the Home Builders Association was a citation, or a note, note on case law and legal liability for the city, and you know, KENEC doesn't require stubbed streets for this very reason. It sounds like that's, was that addressed in your updated proposal? And if not, has the city attorney been consulted and doesn't believe this is a significant liability issue? Or, again, if we've addressed it, then the issue's gone away and that's not necessary. Just curious.
No, that, that language is the same as what's, what was presented in September and in August. However, every ordinance that staff or that council adopts is vetted by the city attorney's office. So if there is- So if there is uh a change that needs to be made, then, then that will be done.
Great. That's, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran.
And Madam Chair, there are a number of uh attendees that have signed in for offering comments as well as Mr. Ford, I believe.
Please, we will now acknowledge Mr. Ford.
Uh good evening, uh planning commission uh members. Uh I'd like to talk a little bit, if I can, specifically about intersection spacing. Uh one of the items that Jacob highlighted in his presentation, we've talked about it quite a bit. And one of the issues that I see about intersection spacing and the problems associated with that has been the actual thing that I know that everybody seems to want, which is what is the absolute minimum? Can you give me a number that I can make as an absolute minimum and work forward? And although I know that we've provided a chart on uh minimum intersection distance, which Jacob highlighted, one of the things that I note in, in my reviewing of private development and land use has been that the number that we currently have, which again, isn't unheard of, but it's a hundred and twenty-five feet. And rather than that being one of the considerations for intersection spacing, it truly becomes the absolute standard for intersection spacing. Um and I can honestly tell you that there are multiple different items that we try to consider when we talk about intersection spacing. We look at site distance, we look at conflict points. Essentially, what we're looking at is access management. And this is not just uh uh intersections. These are also driveways. They function in the same manner because again, they're unsignalized. Uh signalized intersection is totally a different situation. So I think from a uh planning and engineering standpoint, the hundred and twenty-five is actually a hindrance to uh interconnectivity. Because what happens in a development consideration is that one twenty-five, as I mentioned, becomes the standard. There is no need to look for any further at whether or not interconnectivity becomes an important consideration. Have I approved uh offset intersections that are less than that distance? Hundred and twenty-five feet I have in certain special conditions. But again, city staff, we try to look at all the characteristics associated with any kind of proposal brought forth, with safety being one of the most important.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Absolutely.
All right, uh I believe that is our only other comment from staff.
I do want to uh ask Mr. Worley if he wants to make a presentation or not. I, I can't recall, uh Steve, if that was the case.
Yes, I do. Madam Chair, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Mr. Worley.
Well, thank you. Uh again, my name is Steve Worley. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Pasco. And I also wanted to express my support from a public works perspective on the street connectivity proposal before you this evening. I have been in several communities throughout Washington State, and this is an issue that is constantly reviewed. And the thing that we keep coming back to is how much more efficient on the utility side of things, the utility repair side of things, the road maintenance side of things, and on the emergency services side of things, how the connectivity of streets is so important for the betterment of a community. And I just wanted to uh support the efforts that the planning commission is looking at, at this issue. And uh for example, uh I can tell you that I know that the fire chief has mentioned several instances where, when you have a community that has, does not have a good street connectivity system, it tends to reduce the response time for the first responders because it's important for the first responders to know how the streets are connected and which ones are not connected. And sometimes it's difficult to know in one particular area of town whether a street goes through or not. And if they get that wrong and they go down a street and find out that they can't get to the address that they're uh trying to get to because there's a cul-de-sac and the road doesn't go through, that increases their response time, which is a safety issue for our community. So I would strongly encourage the uh adoption of this uh street connectivity issue. Uh the same issue occurs when we are looking at repairs to streets and or utilities. If there is a blockage in the street from a crash or from work that's going on in the street related to a public works issue, the folks in that street have only one way in and one way out. And I have seen situations where we have had medical situations that we have had to work with citizens because we have had work going on in the public right-of-way that it hindered their ability to get out of the area because the streets were not connected. So I just wanted to issue my support for uh moving forward with the street connectivity issue. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Mr. White, any other city employees?
I don't believe so. Uh there are, uh as I mentioned earlier, a number of attendees. And um I can uh just leave that up to you, Madam Chair, to uh address that or I can call them out in the order, order to list it. It's up to you.
Terrific. Well, uh s- why don't we go ahead and um and go to the comments? Um since we do have so many people, let's limit the comments to three minutes.
The uh attendee listed first on my list, and I don't know how that is done by this particular Zoom meeting program, is Brian Thorson.
Terrific, Mr. Thorson.
And Mr. Thorson?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can. Thank you.
Is it okay if Caleb Stromstad goes first and I'll follow behind Caleb?
That sounds perfect.
Okay.
Good evening, uh members of the planning commission. Caleb Stromstad here with Octair Engineering in Pasco. Um just a little bit about myself. Um I've got a vested interest in this community, both from a professional and personal level. I grew up here in Pasco. I went to Pasco High. Live in Pasco, have three kids in the Pasco School District, and my office is here in Pasco. Um I'm a civil engineering consultant. I work on residential subdivision, that's what I do. So this code amendment and these changes are, are in my area of realm of professional expertise. And um in short, um there's a lot of holes um in this code amendment and a lot of unintended consequences that need properly mitigated. And so we're, we're recommending that the planning commission reject this code amendment in its entirety uh with the recommendation that the um planning or the city staff uh work with the development community in coming up with connectivity changes that are holistic in their approach and uh vetted through an effective process. We are in agreement with the city council's goals. Uh safety, congested sidewalks, like Jacob mentioned earlier, traffic efficiency, emergency vehicle response time. We are all in agreement in that. Um unfortunately, cities, uh this specific code amendment was, again, we're, we're kind of beating the drum here on this, was, was created in a vacuum. And there's enough holes in this and enough issues that I can, would have you to speak to specifically if given enough time to speak on them, that it, it needs to go through a thorough vetting process. Um and may give you, I'm gonna point out some, some problems since we're gonna be limited to three minutes, and I'll do my best to stay in there. Brian will speak to this after me, but development costs are gonna increase ten to twenty percent just by the increased uh um street requirement. And that's a significant cost to pass on to the end user, it needs to be considered. Um density will be decreased by ten, the achievable density of a subdivision will be decreased by ten, ten percent. When a city is looking to maximize their density because of the population growth, this is a significant consideration. The legal liability is significant cause for concern, as Mr. Cochran answered. It's standard practice for the city's legal council to review code. But when several land use attorneys have told us that case law dictates that stubbing streets undeveloped property simply for the sake of stubbing streets uh puts the city out at, in a vulnerable position for lawsuits. And again, the city of Kenwick specifically um has been uh counseled by their legal council not to do this. And so um I would challenge the commissioners to ask more pointed questions if the, the legal council has actually vetted this specific issue. Because that's significant concern and the code amendment should not put the position for the city in a vulnerable position for a lawsuit. And there's no, there's no rush to make these changes. Um the planning commission can reject this in its entirety. We can go back to the drawing of board. And at the end of the day, the development community is a big stakeholder. And we have valuable input and we want the same goals. And we just need to be invited to the table. We've had one meeting um that was largely just us responding directly to these code amendments and saying, if you're gonna change this, this is our recommendation. And it was one-sided. And then the second meeting this week was basically a presentation of the changes. And so we don't understand the problem fully. Uh we don't understand the process to get there. That's done a ton of work on this. Um and they've done a good job, their intentions are well um placed. But when you, when you exclude a significant man, number or stakeholder, you're gonna have holes and you're gonna have unintended consequences. And we just ask the planning commission to really dig down on these and and you're gonna, you have the option to recommend that to the city council. And we have every intention of following this as far as we need to. It's city council and, and these questions need to be answered. And if these are risks or consequences that, that you're willing to accept, that's excellent. It just needs to be upfront that yes, we've um considered these consequences and the benefits outweigh the risk. And we don't believe they do, but we want to help get to that solution. I'd be happy to, to provide recommendations on what we think. I'd be happy to, to pick these things apart further. I'd be happy to speak to each one of the um commenters tonight by city staff because um there's, there's different views of opinion and, and you're being led to believe something that there's, there's other ways to think about it. And we have limited time. This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop rambling. But I'll stay on the line and if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to speak them. But again, our recommendation is that the planning commission reject this code amendment in its entirety and recommend city staff work with the development community um to make street connectivity changes that are holistic in their approach with an effective process. I'd also like to ask, Madam Chair, did you receive the uh letter from Mr. Lozey? From the Home Builders Association?
We did. We received that letter.
Does, does each of the planning commissioners get a chance to look at that letter?
We, it was forwarded to us, yes.
Okay, so the collab, the collaboration has not happened. You've observed it, the city's proposed something, and then goes back and makes changes. And there, there has been no collaboration. So um we'd ask that you'd recommend that. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stromstad. Okay, Mr. Thorson, I think Mr. Stromstad used a lot of your time.
Good evening. Uh my name's Brian Thorson. I am the land development manager for Hayden Homes. Uh yeah, thank you for the time tonight. Um I, I do want to see if you guys can go to page thirty-three, if it can be pulled up on the uh screen there of the uh agenda packet tonight, which is an exhibit that Caleb had put together for a previous uh meeting uh a month or two ago. I'm not sure if that's possible or not, but it would help with what I want to talk about.
I'm sorry, page thirty-three of, of what?
Of the, of the agenda packet. That is placed online. It should be an exhibit of a
We can't, yeah, we can't bring it up. Unfortunately, we can't bring it up.
Okay. So uh there, there was, I also submitted, uh resubmitted that same exhibit that Caleb had submitted a month or two ago along with um a, a spreadsheet little cost analysis of the impacts um to development. On, on the exhibit that uh Caleb had submitted a while back, it, it was pointing out the additional cost that a developer will uh incur um due to the loss of lots um on, on a project. And, you know, although, although that is uh a cost that the developer you know, will, will feel with loss of revenue, the, the true numbers that uh impact the developer and the end user, the consumer um are on that uh spreadsheet that I uh submitted earlier today. So if we took a sixteen-acre site um and we had a seventy-five thousand dollar uh purchase price per acre, which is one point two million bucks, uh a lot yield, um at four units to the acre, which is sixty-four lots, um we come out to just under nineteen thousand dollars a lot. And that same sixteen-acre site with eight less lots because of the um reduced block lengths and the connectivity to adjacent properties and everything else, we're, we're reducing this sixteen-acre site by eight lots. So now that uh increases your land cost um to twenty-one, almost twenty-one-five. Uh so an increase of twenty, almost twenty-seven hundred dollars per lot for just the land. So then when you go and you start improving the site, um the same sixty-four lots under the normal, the current code would uh yield about twenty-three hundred and twenty lineal feet of street at six hundred bucks a foot um is just under one point four million dollars to uh improve uh those streets at a cost of twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars per lot. So we take that same sixteen-acre site that is reduced by eight lots is now fifty-six. Um the lineal footage of streets is now increased to twenty-eight hundred and eighty feet at six hundred bucks. Now we're over one point seven million dollars to develop the same sixteen-acre site, which is now just under thirty-one thousand dollars uh a lot. And so that's an increase of nine thousand one hundred dollars um to the developer. And uh when you add that to the cost uh for the land um that was increased, we have a, a total increase of uh just under twelve thousand dollars a lot uh for improving this sixteen-acre site. And when we talk uh dollar to dollar for what it costs us to, the increased cost to develop, when it trickles down to the, the consumer, i- it's anywhere from three to five times the amount that um is the actual increase. So that twelve thousand dollars equates to a thirty-six to almost sixty thousand dollar increase to that end user. So uh a, a lot, uh a sales price on a um, you know, forty-eight thousand dollar home is, you know, would be roughly two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um but when you take that twelve thousand dollar increase uh due to this code change, that forty-eight thousand dollar lot is now a sixty thousand dollar lot. And that home price has now climbed to three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, if not more. Um and then when you couple this code amendment with those increased costs that are passed on to the consumer with the other increased costs that uh builders are already um getting pinched with, uh like increased cost of lumber. Uh we're seeing a increased cost of lumber of sixteen thousand dollars per house for an average square foot of fifteen hundred square feet. So that is a forty-eight thousand dollar increase to the overall sales price. And then the new Washington Energy Code um that's coming out in February, that's gonna cost about another ten thousand dollars uh for every house. So to the end user, that's three times that ten thousand is another thirty. So when you look at the cost to develop, the cost, the increased cost in lumber and the energy code stuff, you're looking at a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars uh of increased sales price that is passed on to the consumer. And uh these are real, these are real numbers. And um, you know, I, 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 I strongly urge the planning commission And, you know, I, I, I strongly urge the planning commission to table this and give the development community more time to talk with, with staff. I mean, Caleb mentioned it, yeah. I mean, staff has done a great job. They're very thorough with what they've done. But it, it's also leaving developers with, you know, big, big issues that we have to face. You know, back in, I think it was 2007 or 2008, when the school district and the, and the city of Pasco implemented the school impact fee of $4,700 per, per house. The city of Pasco took a 65% hit on building permit activity for the first two years. And they didn't start seeing that come back until that third year. And it, I, it was four or five years before it was fully recovered. So I, please consider these cost impacts with this code amendment that is in front of you tonight. And I, I don't understand what the hurry is. You know, my, my proposal, you know, is to, for the planning commission to reject the proposal, proposed code amendment in its entirety with that recommendation that staff and the development community get together and, you know, come up with something that works for everyone that is aligned with council's goals and objectives. And I too will be around if you have any questions on the cost of what I sent in today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thorson. Mr. White?
Madam Chair, I would like to ask Mr. Thorson a question, actually.
Is that how we, is this how we do it? Yeah, go ahead. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really appreciate, Mr. Thorson, your involvement tonight. And you've, you've been a previous meeting too. And I, I certainly understand the, the cost concern, particularly in the COVID economy that we're in and wanting to, to continue the construction economy here in Pasco. But what I haven't heard from development voices in the community, which would really help me as a commissioner, is actual codified provisions to actually help us meet our goals. I mean, Mr. Stromstead said quite eloquently that the development community understands the need to reduce congestion, to provide more walkable communities. But what I'm not hearing from are actual codifications that would help get us there. I understand any codification comes with cost, but I'm not hearing concrete solutions that I can turn to the city council with and go, here, this helps us meet our goals. I just see, I just see the argument of cost come up as the sole reason. And I understand that it is a big one, but I also, I need to see codifications so that I can make good recommendations to the city council. And I haven't heard those things yet.
Yeah. No, that's, that, that's great. And, and you are right. I, I, I'm, I'm talking tonight and basing my discussion on, on cost. And during our, our one previous, you know, meeting with, with Jacob and, and other members of the staff, when we were talking about the proposed code and the different things that we could, you know, that we would propose, I mean, we're not opposed to, and we, we, we discussed this, we're not opposed to a, a, a decrease or an increase block length. I mean, I think right now we're at 13 something and we, we were saying, hey, we'll take 1,000 and, you know, we'll add the pedestrian connectivity. Because to us, as the development community, that is what seems to be driving this more than vehicular, you know, connectivity. It's more pedestrian connectivity. So adding some mid-block pedestrian pathways, we're, we're all for it. You know, the extra cost of the roads and utilities and everything else costs a lot of money. You know, the other thing that we didn't really get a chance to dive deep into further suggestions and proposals, just because in the, in the first meeting and only meeting, we ran out of time. We, you know, the, the way it was, you know, we discussed it, it wasn't about bringing all these extra items to the table. But, you know, other communities such as Walala went through and, and modified their code two years ago and did away with their individual zoning areas, you know. So they didn't have a 7,000 square foot and a 10,000 square foot and a 6,000. It's just one broad, general zone. As long as you meet a minimum density, it gives the developers flexibility to have larger lots mixed with smaller lots, which, you know, helps create more density. And if you can create more density, you're going to bring those lot costs down. But if you're stuck in, in an R1 zone that's 7,200 square foot minimums, you're, you're kind of, you're kind of, your hands are tied. And so we didn't get a chance to sit down and have that discussion and, and kind of work through those things and, and, and talk about them. You know, the, we got to, we got to talk a little bit, but it wasn't what we thought it was going to be. And so that's what we're asking tonight is give us that opportunity so we can sit down and have these conversations and, and try and figure it out. Because, yeah, we're all for changes. We know changes is, is a part of life and development and, and everything else. But let's, let's make sure it, it, it works for, for everybody. We're all for it.
Thank you very much. Mr. White?
Well, I'll continue down the list of attendees. Next is Ginger Wireman.
Ms. Wireman, were you going to speak?
And she may be self-muted.
Okay. Yes, now I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Hi, I'm Ginger Wireman. I live in Richland in a housing tract called Meadows East. I am across from the Meadows Springs driving range and our tract backs up to Steptoe. And we have the pass-throughs throughout our neighborhood. And my neighborhood started in 1979. So this is neither a new idea nor something that doesn't exist in the tri-cities. Hills West also has these connections. And so for me to go to, you know, just say the McDonald's at the corner of Steptoe Engage, I can go out to Steptoe through a little sidewalk and shoot right down the hill or go to Giza. And I visit your students, I'm a non-formal environmental educator, and I visit your students in your schools at least a couple times a year. And I talk to them about urban planning and ask them, you know, are you allowed to ride your bike to Dairy Queen, for example, from some of the neighborhoods nearby? And a lot of times the kids just give me a really blank stare. And whereas my kids, you know, I felt safe because we have the trails and, and these connectors, our kids would go to Walgreens for candy or whatever. But honestly, if you want to decrease costs, the best way would be to get rid of arterials altogether and just build neighborhoods. Because the cul-de-sac ends up being essentially private driveways for people that the citizenry as a whole have the long-term liability for maintaining and plowing and running services too. But, you know, specifically looking at the map, some, just some of the neighborhoods. So for, out by Maya Angelou, if you look at the southeast end of Natchez Court, if there was a pathway, pathway on the northwest end of Natchez Court to the schoolyard, it would be about 678 feet. But to have to go out to the street, the main drag through the neighborhood and around, the kids, A, I'm sure that that street, even though it's a residential street Hudson Drive, I'm sure people speed on it because it's really long and straight, straight distances with no stop signs. You know, that ends up being a quarter mile. And interestingly, it, it looks like there is a pathway from Okanagan to Vintage Park. And yet, as far as I can tell by traffic patterns and the aerial photos, I don't think that, that walkway is actually connected to the park, which is weird. But there are a whole bunch of places in Pasco where the, the distance to the closest services, like from the southwest corner of Mary Hill and Enziean to Yowkes is one and a quarter mile. But from the corner of Boulder and Middle Fork, which has one of these pathways through to the arterial, it's only 0.7 miles. So it just, you know, to me, it's a no-brainer to have these, these pathways. And, and, and as far as the more streets, well, get rid of the arterials and start building grids and stop giving people private driveways and cutting everybody off from, from being able to move on a diagonal across a community to their destination. And those additional costs should go away. So thank you for considering these things. Also, just for the record, the, the curvy sidewalks look cool aesthetically, but I have had so many parents comment that they hate having to push a stroller on the curvy sidewalks and wish they would just be straight on those big arterials. But anyway, thank you for allowing me to comment. And your kids care about these things. It'd be great if you had planning in the schools. So have a good evening and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Wireman. Mr. White?
Next on the list is John Fedorov.
Mr. Fedorov?
This is John Fedorov. I am with JF Engineering over in Kennewick, 7500 West Clearwater Avenue. I am a private civil engineer. I have been involved in the development of West Pasco since about 1994 with the first phase of Sunny Meadows. Been an engineer of record since about 2002, working on developments in that area. Tonight, just wanted to reiterate as a part of the Home Builders Association, appreciation of staff's efforts on this code amendment. It's been a lot of work. Obviously, a lot of effort has gone into it. We do appreciate that. We were hoping, though, I, I think, to get a little bit more involved in feedback and working with staff on this, to come to what we feel could be a workable solution that doesn't impact the cost to affordable housing quite as much. But as Brian and Caleb have already stated, and a letter from Jeff Lozey is on record there, so I'm not going to hatch all that up again. But would like some more time to work with staff on this and would urge planning commission to at least suspend this for another meeting so we can have some time to talk with this a little bit more and try to, try to work out.
Thank you, Mr. Fedorov. Mr. White?
Next I have Carrie Roller.
Hi, good evening. This is Carrie Roller from WashDOT. May I ask that Todd Trepanier be allowed to speak before me?
Okay, sure. Sure. Todd, can you say the last name again, please?
Todd Trepanier.
Thank you. Mr. Trepanier?
Thank, thank you, Carrie. So you can see, we're, we're here kind of in duo, but the way we sign up, we have to do it one at a time. My name is Todd Trepanier. I am the region administrator for the South Central Region of the Washington State Department of Transportation. So this is a region that includes the tri-cities area. So all of tri-cities falls under kind of my responsibility for the state roadway system. I have a planning engineer, Paul Goncet, and he has applied to a, a letter with supporting the adoptment of this code amendment. So just came here this evening as the region administrator of this location to offer my voice towards support of this code amendment. Definitely appreciate this evening to speak to you, commission members, and have sympathy for you for dealing with these very, very tough, tough, difficult issues. You're, you're trying, you're trying to balance a, a lot of different things here and, and what is, what is the good for the overall community, short term and long term. So we're finding out at WashDOT that, that these type of street connectivity issues are extremely important. And we, you do, as I mentioned, you do have the support letter locally from my planning engineer, Paul Goncet. So you have it in your packet or will have it soon. With all the reasons why and outlining some of the areas of concerns, the state system where, you know, this can get you in trouble with these types of things are not in place. I also felt like it was very important, though, that from just hearing from the local WashDOT person, that you hear from our main agency, from our, our headquarters. And that is why Carrie Roller has signed up here also. She is the, I'm sure she will introduce herself, but she is the multimodal planning director for WashDOT for the complete state. And invited her this evening because we, we work in consult with her. Basically, on this type of management, we're almost a liaison for the efforts that she is undertaking across the state. So she will be able to come on here and explain a little bit about, or have some words about how WashDOT is dealing with this issue statewide. Again, to kind of support that it's, it's not just something that's happening here local or something that, that your planning partners come up with. So again, just to reiterate, do support this code amendment and the street connectivity. This is the type of thing that, that needs to be done to get the investment into the right place. And at this point, though, I'd like to turn it over to Carrie Roller so, so she can speak to you and give you some perspective from a statewide viewpoint on what WashDOT is aware of, that jurisdictions are doing and why we support that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Trepanier. Ms. Roller?
Who appears to be self-muted. There we go.
There we go. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. Again, my name is Carrie Roller and I'm the Director of Multimodal Planning at the Washington State Department of Transportation. Our agency is very happy to support the proposal in front of you, the code amendments related to street connectivity. Our WashDOT's mission is to provide safe, reliable, and cost-effective transportation options. And the legislature has set six transportation policy goals that guide our work: economic vitality, preservation, safety, mobility, environment, and stewardship, much in line, I think, with what the city has set for itself. Washington's Transportation Secretary Roger Millar, in his 2020 State of Transportation address, highlighted the importance of connecting transportation and land use and working proactively to provide good transportation connections in growing communities. So you heard from Regional Administrator Todd Trepanier. He's your, he and his team are your local partners. And I'm happy to come here as the state's planning director to share that statewide perspective. And I want to affirm the supportive comments that you got from our region already. Street connectivity is an essential element of a transportation-efficient community. As you heard, our state goals echo the themes that you all have identified in your goals for the city of Pasco, as well as the policy actions that you've taken. And realizing these goals requires action. So you've adopted a complete street ordinance? That's great. That's such an important element towards developing a transportation efficiency, excuse me, a transportation-efficient community. Complete streets really need complete networks to be meaningful. Network connectivity is key to making real the transportation system that's envisioned in our plans and policies and goals. So to achieve some of the real goals that we've identified, like safety, efficiency, accessibility, to make sure that we're moving people and goods, and resilience, to make sure that we're not dependent on a single roadway facility and we're not limited by that one way in, one way out, network connectivity is really critical for that. Communities need access and connections, and a proactive approach to building this in as the community grows is far more effective than trying to come back later to address problems with poor access and connectivity and a much higher cost. problems with poor access and connectivity and a much higher cost. So the approach that you're taking here with the proposed code amendments is a tried and tested approach. It's working across the United States and it's working in many communities across Washington State. So Pasco's in really good company here. This is an established best practice. And you heard from your staff a number of the resources and guidelines that point to these kinds of actions that cities can take to make real their goals. This is accompanied also by guidance and direction from the United States Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, and many more. You also heard from staff some examples of other communities in our state where they've taken similar approaches, like in Ellensburg and Walla Walla. So that's what I wanted to share, reemphasize WashDOT's support, both from the local perspective and from the statewide perspective. We're really happy to be a technical resource and a transportation partner to you. If there's anything that we can do to provide more information or answer questions, we're happy to do that, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Roller. That is it. All right. Commissioners, do we have any questions or discussion?
This is Commissioner Jennings, and I would like to ask if Mr. Thorson or Mr. Stromstad could please provide clarification if their concerns are primarily related to the block length and block perimeter, or do they take issue also with the connectivity requirements?
Yeah, this is Brian Thorson, Hayden Holmes. Yeah, it's Brian, well, it's it's with all of it. The the block length, for sure, the perimeter, and yeah, the connectivity, all of it.
Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioners, do we need to have any discussion? I'm going to close the public hearing then. Going, going, gone. All right. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, if I may speak, this is Commissioner Myron.
Please, Commissioner Myron.
Yeah, I just want to speak overall to the process again. I really appreciate all the work that's been done and those who came tonight to speak and have been speaking the last few months. You know, if we were to start from scratch tomorrow, go through this process all over again in a different way, we would also maybe exclude viewpoints in a different version of this. My recommendation would be that that we do close this public hearing and forward these recommendations to City Council and allow them to consider it. We are hopefully putting these provisions forward to further their goals, give them a chance to also look at at these as well. I I commend staff for the work they've done thus far, and I think there have been accommodations made in a number of ways to balance interests. Some folks would say imperfectly, but I I think it it's very commendable, what they've done. I think we should recommend this to City Council, let them have their day. There'll be another public forum under City Council to consider these things, and I'm in favor of moving forward with the motion.
Is that a formal motion?
Yeah, I I would be happy to make them, unless there's more discussion.
I'd like to discuss something, just as that was added that I think.
Who is the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Who's speaking?
This is Commissioner Campos.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos.
Jay Campos. Anyways, you know, our job is to kind of shore things up, if you will, before they get to City Council. And if we don't do our due diligence, and I'm not saying that we haven't, just as a discussion point, it goes to them and they feel like we haven't done that, and, you know, it gets kicked back to us. We want to make sure that we're using their time as as effectively as possible, just like with some of the other things when we were doing the land usage, things before they went to the hearing examiner. You know, we got some comments back from the Commission or the City Council that maybe they saw things and shouldn't have. So just as a talking point for the other Commissioners, something to consider. I I'm not making a decision or making a recommendation either way. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Cochran. I think that's a great point. I mean, I do think, though, if you think about this, this was first brought before the Planning Commission in December of 2019, so we're almost close to a year. In two months, it'll be a year, right? And so I know that some in the Development Committee feel they haven't had ample opportunity, but in some ways, that's because they weren't paying attention to the Planning Commission meetings. And so I think in about June or July, the Development Committee started to be alarmed and get engaged. And I I really, and we've delayed this multiple months, and I really think that staff has bent over backwards to try to work and accommodate and compromise and be super creative and listen to the massive amount of stakeholders they have. So while I understand that, I I'm I tend to be where Commissioner Myron is, is that I think we have done due diligence, and this has been a long process, and I'm not sure that starting from scratch is not going to alienate another set of point of views for the people that have participated. And I'm not sure it's effective use of staff's time either. So I guess I'm not that positive about starting from scratch for this whole thing.
Commissioner Campos, again, I I don't disagree. I think so. And I I do want to make, you know, as a Planning Commission, our job is to really focus on land usage and code amendments. And and the developers brought really good stuff to us, but it's really out of our purview. Dollars and cents is not what we should be basing a decision off of. So again, I'm just bringing these up as talking points, not so much as I already have a mind made up. It's just something that I think that as Commission members, we ought to be able to voice and get on public record and before we make a formal recommendation and movement.
Valuable discussion.
Commissioner Jennings here.
Yes, please.
Want to thank Commissioners Cochran and Campos for their shared opinions in this matter. I do voice it, or want to also voice that I think we should continue the discussion here regarding this matter, especially with with regards to the block length and block perimeters. It it sounds from a development standpoint that their primary concern is the density, not the connectivity. I I tried to highlight that in a specific question to Mr. Thorson and Mr. Stromstad. But it to me seems that we are very concerned with density, both from a development standpoint and from the city's perspective of being able to grow. For that reason, I I would suggest that we continue this discussion, see if we can find amenable solutions that address the density perspective from both the developer and the city's growth outlook. To that extent, it doesn't seem like we have issues with having developments connect and providing the access pathways for our pedestrians that make our community livable and provide that accessible transportation route.
Thank you, Commissioner Jennings. So unless we want to discuss any anything further or have questions for staff, I would suggest that a motion be made.
Madam Chair, we can address Commissioner Jennings.
Go ahead, Mr. White.
We we can address Mr. Jennings's comments very briefly.
Yep, thank you. Sorry to interrupt here. I I do want to, again, reiterate that we don't regulate density through the street portion of our municipal code. That's done through Title 25 and the Development Standards and Development Regulations within Title 25. I would encourage anyone interested in density development flexibility to stay tuned for the last item on tonight's Planning Commission meeting agenda, where we will address that specifically. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Myron. I have a motion.
Please.
I move to close the public hearing on the proposed code amendment, CA 2019-013, and recommend to the Pasco City Council the adoption of the proposed code amendment for street connectivity as contained in the October 15, 2020 Planning Commission staff report.
All those in favor? No, ooh, someone's got to second it.
I second. Now, this is Commissioner Cochran.
Thank you. So it was moved by Commissioner Myron and seconded by Commissioner Cochran. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, can I ask the nays, can you please name yourselves?
Commissioner Jennings.
Commissioner Campos.
Okay.
Commissioner Teal.
Okay, Commissioners Jennings, Campos, and Teal, say nay. So, uh, the ayes would be Commissioner Myron, Commissioner Cochran, Commissioner Bowers, Commissioner Mendez, Commissioner A. Campos, and Commissioner Handler. So I believe that the ayes have it, the motion passed. Explanation of the path forward.
Certainly, again, appreciate Planning Commission's thoughts and comments, everyone else who's provided comments as well. Staff will certainly take a look, again, to make sure that there aren't any legal complications with this prior to being in front of the council. And we'll probably have to set a date for that and report back to the Planning Commission at the November meeting of the progress of this item. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have workshop items. The first being a code amendment regarding sign code introduction, a sign code introduction. That's Master File Number CA 2019-002.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just very briefly, this was an inter, this is an introduction to the sign code process that we've been working on for about six months now. So far, we've been engaged in an academic process that has taken our existing sign code, which I have to be candid, was poorly written. It's contradictory and confusing. Our consultant has, who's a very specialized consultant in this regard, has been taking the existing ordinance, putting it in a format that's chronologically logical and and easier to read and obviously much more user-friendly. The agenda item, the Agenda Memorandum, simply identifies where we're going with this. We have received her first draft of an annotated outline. We'll clean that up so that it makes sense to the Commission and get that to you at next month's meeting. And by the way, the sign the sign code amendment process is a two-phase process. This first phase was the initial phase. Budgeting has been requested for 2021 to continue with Phase Two.
May I ask a question? Ms., Mr. White? So when we're talking side code, this would apply to things like signage regarding political candidates, signage regarding, can you clarify that?
It it's signage.
It's signage, okay. So everything regarding, I mean, such as at outside of Vinnie's, the mural, does that count as a sign as well? Because I remember that was an issue.
It does.
Okay, because that currently counts as a sign, as well as I I noted that electronic signs were mentioned here, such as over in Richland, the big Hapo electronic sign.
That I can see from my house, yes.
That you can see, exactly.
Yeah, murals, political signs, temporary signs, you know, obviously poll signs. I I might add that the second phase of this process will definitely be significantly more involved with community outreach and taking a look at specific signage for specific areas in Pasco. Right now, everything is regulated the same, whether you're downtown or on Road 68, it's the same regulation. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So we're we're specifically looking at area-specific signage and everything that goes with it.
And I noticed when we say area-specific, you called out some of the some of the areas that when you're trying to distinguish downtown, you were distinguishing that on the basis of it being retail, commercial versus residential, or?
Yeah, the the downtown Pasco Development Authority board, boundary or borders, for the most part, compromised downtown. Some people think of downtown only as the common wall area of of Pasco, the common wall area of downtown, but I think it would be logical to extend that definition both further west and possibly further north.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it, and I look forward to see what ends up being included. Any other comments from Commissioners on that?
Commissioner Campos, I'll just speak candidly, as I always do. Man, if I had a magic wand and I could be king for a day, I would love to get rid of all political signs. I can't stand them. And it seems like the way we have our elections, they're always up, not the same candidates, but every year, they're just always up in the same spots, and I can't get away from them. And I get, like I said, it's just, this is just speaking candidly. I know that we're probably not going to go that extreme, but I mean, oh, man, you give me a magic wand, I'm going to make it happen.
Okay, now I know what to get you for your birthday, Commissioner J. Campos. All right. Any other Commissioners? All right. Well, with that, next on the agenda, we have another code amendment. This is regarding House Bill 1923, Master File CA 2020-001, and Master File 2020-002. Staff?
Good evening again, members of the Planning Commission. This is a minor update, staff update regarding a series of code amendments related to House Bill 1923. As a reminder, House Bill 1923 was enacted by the Washington State Legislature in the summer of 2019 to address housing affordability in the state of Washington. Through House Bill 1923, the Department of Commerce made funding available to cities who intended to take action via amendments to increase housing capacities within their jurisdictions. The Pasco City Council had approved staff's intent in September of 2019 for three amendments that include authorizing at least one duplex, triplex, or courtyard apartment in one or more zoning districts that permit single-detached residences, the authorization of lot-size averaging in all zoning districts that permit single-detached units, and also the authorization of accessory dwelling units on all lots in zoning districts that permit single-detached units. So these amendments are required to be adopted no later than June 15 of 2021. And with approval of both the Planning Commission and the Pasco City Council, the city will be reimbursed for staff efforts through the contract and funding agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce. uh through the contract and funding agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce. That was through House Bill nineteen twenty-three. So staff uh in the report and, and I believe in June or July had a s- a pretty thorough comp- uh report on housing in the city of Pasco. And, and just for reiteration, forty-three percent of our city is dedicated for residential housing. Of all that housing, eighty-four percent is for low density. Seventy-one percent of our housing is pa- in Pasco are detached dwelling units. Only two percent of our residential lands are reserved for high-density housing. So recent updates to our comprehensive plan and council goals have provided staff with many new and reaffirmed policies and amendment uh that these amendments would address. So staff um has participated in monthly meetings with other juris- with other jurisdictions and the Department of Commerce to discuss the details of each proposal, the challenges and the opportunities that each has brought up. Uh, we are a little behind schedule. Um, but the meetings have provided better clarity for staff. We've been able to actually learn a little bit through some of the hiccups other jurisdictions have gone through, so the idea is that we don't have to go through them here locally. So lastly, I want to mention that one of council's goals, one of the council goals in the resolution in September was the development of a housing action plan. This is a significant undertaking. Um, and staff believes that the amendments for House Bill nineteen twenty-three will align with the housing action plan and actually will help kickstart the development of the action plan itself. Uh, so with that being said, staff uh will begin to distribute a survey out to um to gather feedback and uh input on how we can look at the zoning regulations and the development regulations of Title twenty-five specifically uh to get feedback from real estate professionals, affordable housing advocates, home developers and builders to try to address the needs in Pasco. Uh, I, I know there was a mention of what had occurred in Walla Walla, and they were actually one of the first in the state of Washington to really open up their zoning code to allow for flexible, uh, uh more flexibility for the uh whether it was a developer or a homeowner who just wanted a subdivide. So staff does intend to follow up with the planning commission. By the end of the year, we look forward to hopefully having a draft ordinance for the first two of the three items uh by the end of the year and early January, February of twenty twenty-one as we move forward, making progress with the third amendment on accessory dwelling units. As we incorporate those into what will be a comprehensive housing action plan. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Questions or comments? Um, so I am excited to hear there's going to be more surveying involved, and I certainly hope that uh some members of the development community um get involved in uh in the process giving input at that point. Um, and I think that will uh help to have the end product be inclusive, at least on the uh on our public hearing. There was definitely a uh I think an, an idea um that a lot of the goals that we're talking about here wanted to be um shared. Um, so hopefully, even though we might have different um across the board, there may be different ideas about how to get to them. Um, get to those goals. It'd be great if we can all work on those earlier on. Any other comments? Nope. All right, so with that, we are going to move on to other business. We've got a discussion uh on the proposed revisions to the regular meeting time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just very briefly, um the uh bylaws for the planning commission still work fine. They're, they're quite dated, but they're essentially the way that we do things now. Um, but it's interesting to note that uh the last amendment to the bylaws happened in the mid nineties, and they were to um change the meeting starting time from eight P M to seven P M, which I've found fascinating. Um, I guess people stayed up later in the nineties. Um but uh the um with the, with the volume of work that uh have we presented to the commission over the past uh roughly one year or so, uh, we've been starting early so that we get finished at an appropriate hour. And uh staff had asked this question earlier of the commission. Uh, at that time, we were down uh two members and uh Pam uh was on her way out. Her, she was still serving because her t- uh she had not, uh, her appoint re- her replacement had not been appointed. But now that we have two c- new, three new commissioners, uh, uh, staff would like to again inquire of the commission if the official starting time should remain at seven, be changed to six thirty or six. And I recall the first discussion, Mr. Campos, Jay Campos uh did indicate that six o'clock starting time would be problematic for him. Um, so uh with that, um be happy to answer any questions. I think the, the uh focus though will be on the commission's uh feelings for any change in starting times at this point.
All right, would you like to survey us right now, Mr. White, or what are you looking for, feedback?
Any feedback at all?
Well, I'll just say seven o'clock is way too late. I like six A, I'd like six, I was gonna say six A M. I liked six P M. Uh, six thirty also seems to work right now.
Uh, Commissioner Jay Campos here. Yeah, six, six thirty is still the time for me. I uh leave the two hundred east area, which is about forty-minute drive out from my house, and then it happens that every week that there is a commission meeting is I have to grab my daughter from all the way out in South Kennebec, and I just I'm usually in my front door at six oh five, six ten. Um, so it just, this is the way it works out, six thirty is probably uh the best time for me. If we can do an odd start time, six fifteen, six fifteen, I could probably make, but that's probably cutting it a little close, but I, and if the commission is uh amenable to uh a different time than say, you know, thirty-minute increments, I, I could make that work.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Myron. Oh. Sorry, I'm jumping, jumping the gun here. Just wanted to say six thirty has been a good time. And I have about five more years left on my term. Uh, it'd be great to be able to meet in person again. Um, and it's so anytime has been easy just because of the remote nature of our meeting, but I think moving ahead when we are meeting in person, six thirty is still a good time, and, and I know there's some new commissioners that have other perspectives too.
Yes, Commissioner Cochran, I'm flexible. Um, I'm, I'm open to, I'm kind of with Commissioner Bowers, earlier the better, but um six thirty works fine. Um, I did have a question. Do we know how do the phase two, entry into phase two, does that change what we can do in council chambers at all?
It does not. Uh, that was the first question we, we asked, yes, not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran. Any of the other commissioners like to sound in?
Yeah, this is Commissioner A. Camp. Six thirty works well. I think it's, it's been, it's been good.
This is Commissioner Mendez. Uh, six thirty works uh for me as well, and I'm also looking forward to the day when we can meet in person. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Jay Hemler, and I agree, six thirty works. Um, six would be, would be better for me, but six thirty is workable. And um I do look forward to uh meeting in person with every, with everybody when we can per uh what I would consider to be a more interactive meeting and, and, and far, far more positive. So uh anyway, six thirty works. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Teal. Uh, I have girls that I have to pick up, so six thirty works best for me. So, sounds good.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. We all, to Commissioner Jennings? No? All right. Well, we have heard from several commissioners. Um, with that, I recommend a motion to adjourn.
Do we need a motion, or you're just going to adjourn?
No. So before we adjourn, I think why Commissioner, or uh, Mr. White brought this up is we need to make a motion to amend our bylaws to change our start. So I would make a motion to amend the planning commission's bylaws to change the start time from seven o'clock to a six thirty official start time.
Second, this is Commissioner Cochran.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Jay Campos and seconded by Commissioner Cochran. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And I believe it was unanimous. The motion passed. All right. With that, thank you very much for stepping in there, Commissioner Jay Campos. With that motion, it says here that uh I have to make a, recommend a motion to adjourn. Now.
Maker, no. We, we, we make.
I think every, everyone is good on that. Right? Okay. Thank you very much, commissioners. Thank you very much, all our attendees this meeting, and uh we are adjourned at eight eleven. Have a good evening.